Regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. At this point in time, we're going to call this meeting to order. I'm going to ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Vias. Mayor Protem McEckern.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. At this point in time, individuals who want to address the City Council, fill out a card. There's only one individual, Mr. Howard Shirley, is representing the NID Housing Counseling. And Mr. Shirley, you can step up to the microphone. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon to the Honorable Mayor. My name is Howard Shirley, represent NID Housing Counseling Agency. We have over forty locations across the United States. We actually have been around for about thirty years. Part of what NID will present to you is an opportunity for you to save your home. So we try and help individuals get loan modifications. We work with different banks and different agencies, as well as with the state. Part of what's going on is that everyone believes that the housing crisis has passed us, because Wall Street said so. But Wall Street and Main Street are not on the same street. We get a lot of individuals who come into our offices and still need help, and we're trying to provide that help to them. One of the programs that we're going to be presenting will be at the Burning Bush Church here in Victorville on the fifteenth. And we wanted to provide that information to you, so that you could provide that information to your constituents. We know that a lot of them are hurting. We know that they are afraid as well. They don't know what's going to happen. They don't know if there's someone there who can help them. Well, we are a HUD-approved agency. Our agency has been around, as I said to you, for over thirty years. We have an opportunity to sit down with them. It costs them absolutely nothing. We're mandated by Congress to keep them in their home. We're paid by Congress to keep them in their home. So although it doesn't cost the individual any money, we are actually paid housing counselors. We are also certified. You can go to the HUD website, and you can locate us there. You can also find us in the National Industry Standards, which we uphold. Part of those standards will be to make sure that the individual has every opportunity to stay in their home. There are a lot of rules and regulations that they go through, and a lot of individuals have gone through different types of relief. You know, they go to attorneys, and attorneys charge them. They go to individuals, and they don't know if those individuals are legitimate or not. We're going to make sure that we try and help them stay in their homes, and let them know that they do not have to pay for a loan modification. One of the things that we also do is that we try and give them an opportunity to get pre-qualified for a program that the State of California has called Keep Your Home California. That's the second page that I provided to you. The state has over $2 billion earmarked specifically to try and help homeowners stay in their home. It comes in those different four programs. You can see there, the unemployment program, that means if an individual's unemployed, they will have an opportunity to stay in their home and have their loan paid for up to nine months while they're looking for employment. The second program is the principal reduction program. That particular program will help them bring their home down to current market value. The third program that's there is called the mortgage reinstatement program. That means that an individual may have been unemployed, and they got behind one month or two months, they weren't quite able to catch up. This program will help them catch up, so that they'll be back solid again. So that way, they don't look like they're behind thirty and sixty days on an ongoing and continuous basis. And the last program is for transitional assistance. That means that an individual may have lost their job, and they don't have any income, and they have no opportunity of saving their home.
You have ten seconds left. Ten seconds, go ahead.
What's that?
You have ten seconds left.
Okay. And they may have an opportunity there to have money to transition out of their home. So we just want your help to try and get this information out. We'll be glad to contact your offices, and we'll be glad to provide our information to you, and you can put that information onto your website if you like. Okay? If you have any questions, our phone numbers are all over all of the packages there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we have no further business until we come back into regular session, but we do have the closed session items. I'd ask the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. There are four items listed on the agenda, two for the Airport Authority and two for the City Council. I understand from staff, there is no need to go into closed session on items A or C, the SEC investigation at this point. However, we do need to go into closed session on items B and D. B pertains to real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. Property pertains to hangars at the airport. It's more specifically set forth on the agenda. The second item for the city is also real property negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8, and this pertains to VBWRA property on Hellendale -- sorry, city property on Hellendale Road, Victorville, and that property is described, as well as the negotiating parties is set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report that either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
A question for the attorney. You indicated that staff has indicated there's no need to go into executive session on the SEC item, so does that mean that we do not get to discuss it if we have questions?
That item typically, I believe, staff wants to pull that item, but since it's there and it's on the agenda, you have the option of going into closed session on that.
Well, there may be questions. I'd rather that we do go into closed session on that, just in case there are questions.
All right, then, those items are set forth. They are not pulled. They are specifically described on the agenda as Airport Authority item A and Airport item -- sorry, City Council item C, and to the extent there is action on those items, that will also be reported.
Thank you. No further questions. We'll adjourn to executive session at five. Welcome, everyone. It's the City of Victorville's regular council meeting of June 4, 2013. We have just returned from -- we had a recess for closed session, and so, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protem McEckern.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. If the city attorney would report on the closed session item, please.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We had four closed session items listed, two for the Airport Authority, two for the City Council. There is reportable action only with respect to item D, which is City Council Real Estate Negotiations pertaining to property at Hellendale Road. Negotiating parties were Logan Olds, General Manager of the Victor Valley Waste Water Reclamation Authority, and the City Manager. The reportable action, first, the record should reflect that Councilmember Vias abstained from participation in the closed session. The reportable action is that the remaining four members of the council voted unanimously 4-0, that they are not interested at this point in selling the City of Victorville Industrial Waste Water Treatment Plant. That's the only reportable action at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. At this point, I would ask Reverend Vernon Glenn to come forward. He will lead us in the invocation, and please remain standing, and we'll have the pledge of allegiance by our Victorville Police Chief, Sam Lucia. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to come down front at the podium. We have proclamation and some presentations regarding our Public Works Day. The agenda says that Row Ratliff is going to assist, but I believe Sean McGlade would be the individual, so I will meet you down front. Before I turn the microphone over to John, I have a proclamation. Are you going to accept the proclamation? Oh, good. Thank you very much.
Fernando Morales, Public Works.
My name is Michael Whitesides from Public Works.
Thank you for being here. This is a proclamation from the City of Victorville, whereas the public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as stormwater systems, animal control, sewers, weed control, graffiti, sidewalks, curb and gutters, streets, fleet maintenance, water surfaces, solid waste collection, and recycling -- don't leave anything out. Whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends upon these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally independent upon the efforts and skills of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitudes and understanding of the importance of this work. I now therefore do hereby join the other members of the City Council in proclaiming May 16, 2013, as Public Works Day, and congratulations. Sean, do you want them to remain, or do you set the end of this portion? Thank you very much. Thank you. And then I'm --
(applause)
And then we have a presentation by Sean McGlade, and I will not steal your thunder and let you have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Public Works Day, which was on May 16th, the Public Works Department hosted a field trip for some 300 fourth grade students from several schools in the Victor Elementary School District. It was held at Schmidt Park at SCLA. This special event, Public Works Day, enabled students to learn how the Public Works Department contributes to the quality of life in Victorville. The theme for this year is because of public works, our community is a better, safer place to live, work, and play, and it included participation from the Fire Department and Community Services Department. Our goal was to educate the students about public works by providing an understanding of the activities that would broaden their civic knowledge and understanding of the public works infrastructure. Nine stations were set up to demonstrate different activities: household hazardous waste, graffiti abatement, recycling, water quality testing, sewer cleaning machine, closed-circuit TV, van for sewer inspections, animal control, and street sweeping, and traffic signals. The students were invited to write about their favorite Public Works Day station, and their essay showed that we did indeed accomplish that goal. So on behalf of the City of Victorville, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank certain people involved with this. From the Victor Elementary School District, we want to thank Kim Claire and Jeanette Els -- I'm not sure if they're here today -- for participating with the city and coordinating with the schools for the attendance at the Public Works Day. The schools involved were Brentwood, Challenger, Delray, Endeavor, Galileo, La Mitas, Mojave Vista, Parkview, and Village Elementary. I'd like to thank all of the people in Public Works, water, community services, and fire for their professional event presentations and event support. I'd like to thank the mayor for attending the event and for presenting the awards tonight. And we also had some sponsors: American Landscape and Maintenance, Athen Services. And finally, congratulations to the first-place winner, who receives $100 Barnes &amp; Noble certificate, and her essay was about the Victorville's closed-circuit television van, which inspects the sewers. She's from Brentwood School of Business and Leadership, Tani Anderson. Congratulations.[1284.11][1284.11](applause)
And also, I want to thank all of the students who participated, and it wouldn't be possible if the parents didn't participate and assist, and we really do appreciate that. So thank you all. Give yourself a round of applause for your efforts, and thank you again. Madam City Clerk, the presentation, the agenda, and revisions.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or on any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who will submit a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the City Council. There are four revisions to tonight's agenda. Those revisions have been placed on the dais for the City Council and have been made available to the public. The first one is to item number six on the agenda. There is additional language that is to be added to the resolution on that item. Second one is on the public hearing item number seven. There is a minor modification to the ordinance, and that language is included in the revision. On item number 11, there is a modification to the -- excuse me, there is a request to approve the settlement agreement with Nutro. There's some additional information that has been submitted in regards to that item. And on item number 12, there is a request from the staff to remove that item from the agenda at this time. And those are all the revisions I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we have the public comment section, and you've previously been asked to fill out a card. I have two cards. One is for the item now, which is public comment, agenda item number three. The other is agenda item number seven, and so I would ask Sharon Foster to come forward at this time.
Good evening, Madam -- or, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, our council people, staff, and our visitors. I'm Sharon Foster, and I'm with the Route 66 Museum here in Victorville on D Street. A couple of things that I'd like to discuss tonight, and it's kind of old hat, I've been here before, but I'd like to, again, talk to you and see if we can't work out some kind of an arrangement or even maybe a conference as to bringing more initial funds, more sources of revenue into Victorville. My pledge for Victorville was to bring Victorville into a destination rather than a potty stop. Over the course of three weeks, we have had one bus tour from England. They spent substantial, fifty, about 50 people. And last week, and this, and today, I had two motorcycle groups amounting to 50 people, again, from England, and they spent money. I'd like to keep that revenue, if we can, here within the Victorville community. The people this evening, the motorcycle group, went on to Barstow to lodge. Why can't we have that lodging here within the area? I think it's about time we continue or kind of think about tourism in Victorville. We had a very good reception with the fair. We reached people that knew we were there, went by the museum daily, but did not realize what the museum was. So I think that we could be quite a driving force in possibly putting Route 66, Victorville, back on the map. With my card today, I received information that they had done an article in the Sacramento Bee in regard to the museum. So it's not just the Route 66 corridor that we're getting the attention, and we need to continue with that volume of attention if we can. One of the other things that I want to speak to you about is, every year in November, the Route 66 Museum has a fundraiser, and as a 501(c)(3), it's quite a big event for us. It's not quite the moneymaker that it has been in the past, but we would like to open up this event to Old Town Victorville and make it an Old Town Festival with maybe the flag ceremony at the Veterans Memorial. Maybe we can bring some of the other merchants into this, making a nice display. Maybe we can have an Old Town walk, showing what the Old Town used to be, the Penny's Building, the Sears Building, the Bank of America. So I'd like for you people to help us, maybe do some additional thoughts on this. We're not asking for funds. We're asking for mental support and telling us what you think that we really could do to bring back, first of all, Route 66 corridor, and then possibly Old Town. I did bring tonight, I have a summary of every--
The time is up. I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. Everybody's given three minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
If you want to be on the agenda, we'll be more than happy to put you on the agenda. You'd be more than happy to have a presentation, but we have to restrict this to three minutes for individuals who show up when we don't know what they're going to speak about. Otherwise, we'd have people in the audience who'd want to hear it. So it's restricted to three minutes. My apologies.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I will explain this once more for the audience, that we are required to discuss matters in public so that the public knows what we're dealing with. Anyone can address the council, but if it's not an agendized item, we don't have a discussion. We can't give answers. We can't get involved in it, because otherwise, we're getting involved in conversations which may lead to decision-making when the public was not notified that we were going to hear or discuss that particular matter. The Brown Act is very serious. The state laws are very serious about these things of agendizing, and you've heard from all of our council members about being a very open, transparent council. For individuals who feel they want more time, they can contact staff, they can contact me, or they can submit items and get on the agenda, and then it's publicized where all individuals can appear and speak on either side of that particular issue. So I'm sorry when people feel that I'm cutting them off, but we have to hold to the three-minute period, but thank you very much for your presentation. The -- on with the agenda. The -- on with the agenda. Under the Library Board of Trustees, there were no items at the time we posted the agenda. Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, there were no items. Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, agenda item number four, written communications. Just taking action since it's just a notice. Madam Clerk?
Yes, this does require an action by the council.
We'll open for a motion in a second.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number five. This is a standard sublease agreement with ARC Aerospace Industry. Any questions of Mr. Metzler? If not, for motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Then item number six. If you noticed before, there was a revision to this item. A few words were inadvertently left out of the resolution. It's been corrected. Then item number six, it's a resolution. Resolution of the Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency approving an agreement to terminate and release disposition and development agreement by and among the successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Pierce Brothers Investments LLC and Allied Bank, and authorizing the execution and implementation of said agreements to terminate and release disposition and development agreement. Chair's open for motion in a second.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem McEckern. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number seven. Again, there was a revision. This is a public hearing item. Any questions of staff before I open the -- this is a continued public -- no, it's a new public hearing. Is that correct?
This is a new public hearing.
New public hearing. Any questions of the staff before I open the public hearing? No questions? I hereby open the public hearing for anyone who would want to appear and speak on this item. And as I indicated before, I have one card on agenda item number seven. Mr. Robert Harriman.
Counsel, I would just like to address one thing, and that's, I've been in here before about it. The -- we need changes in our ordinances in regards to the signage that are being the commercial signs are getting out of hand. They're not -- they're being put on sidewalks that are several blocks away from the established business. And they are, like I've been in here before, talked about, you got people twirling signs on public property. They're putting the city at risk. If somebody gets in a car accident, they're going to blame it on the city for somebody standing on the city sidewalk while some idiot is twirling a sign that nobody can read. It's got to stop. Do these people have workman's compensation insurance for these employees? I highly doubt it. I certainly have to have it to do work here in the city. Do they wear -- are they required to wear reflective vests? I don't think they are required to do that either. This has got to stop. As far as the signs, the signage around town has gotten extremely sloppy, and I understand the manpower to enforce this stuff, it has dwindled. But people are putting signs on sidewalks, they're hanging flags with the business names on the -- right there, on the perimeter of the city sidewalk, and it's just looks trashy. So, we need to work on getting some better sign ordinances and having them enforced. Now, four, five years ago, that was the case. You couldn't put a sign on the sidewalk, otherwise somebody stopped from the city and told you you can't. But now, that doesn't seem to be the case. So, it's getting a little out of hand. I would like the council to look at being a -- changing and being more forthright with the writing on the issues or the signs. Because these people are -- now, I'll give you an example. There's a marijuana dispensary somewhere down there near D Street. And two blocks away, there's a medical marijuana symbol on a sign in front of, on D Street, in front of the old park on the city sidewalk. So, everybody can drive on D Street and see a sign that says there's a marijuana dispensary two blocks up on Seventh Street. That sign should -- the city code enforcement should stop there, pick the sign up, and not give it back. I think council would agree with me on that. That's trashy. That just makes Victorville look terrible. So, I would ask that we look at our sign ordinances and be as fair as we can, and at the same time, try to clean up the problem we're having. A number of years ago, the developers, the developers were showing homes. They had lines of people to buy homes, and they would pick 20 signs with arrows on it in an intersection. And I do recall the city enforcing that and requiring the developers to get a permit and where they can and cannot put those signs. Obviously, that's not happening now. I would like to see some of that happening, okay? The signage makes our city, it's a face of the city.
Thank you very much for your comments. I assure, when we have the public hearings and people speaks, these minutes are considered by the city council. We listen to everything that's said. They're also passed on to staff. And in this case, Bill Webb listens carefully. A lot of these amendments come up as a result of input from the public. That's where we get a lot of the information because this is your community, and you have the right to demand the kind of community you want to live in, and we do listen. So, thank you. There's no further speakers. I'm going to close this public hearing on this section. Any questions of staff at this point? Not? Chair's open for motion in a second.
For introduction and waiver of second reading.
I've lost my screen. Can I get a little help?
Voice vote until we get that--
Oh, there we go. Thank you.
Second by Councilmember Vias. And just for the record, that is with the revision as presented tonight. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is item number eight, which is a consent calendar for eight A, B, C, D, E.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is written communications, agenda item number nine, consideration of the settlement agreement by and among First Assembly of God, Victorville, the California Corporation, First Assembly of God of Victorville, California Corporation doing business as Victorville Christian School, Cass Commercial Bank, and the City of Victorville Municipal Corporation located in the county of San Bernardino. This has been, been worked on for a lot of years. We're familiar with it, even though it started under a different council than what we have here. The city manager, have any further comments on this?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
And if there's no questions, motion's open.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Kennedy.
I'm being advised that in the backup material, which I can't seem to access, only because I'm barely competent with this. In the backup material, there's a statement in the last sentence on compensation that the balance to be paid by the church, and I think it should be paid to the church.
I don't -- can you have the attorney look at that section real quickly?
Can you find that on the --
Without having the specific reference, the settlement agreement basically does provide for the city's payment to the church, First Assembly of God, to compensate them for the acquisition of property, both a certain portion of property and fee title, some temporary construction easements, and some permanent slope easements. The amount of -- total amount of compensation to the church, the monetary portion of the settlement, is $2.5 million. Originally, the church was seeking damages, which included severance damages, in the amount of $8.5 million. In addition to the monetary compensation, there is a non-monetary component whereby the city and the church are agreeing to cooperate in good faith.
Andre, here's the typo, I think. Monetary compensation, total amount $1,803,000 shall be paid by the church at the close of escrow.
That certainly is a typo. It's the other way around.
Be paid by the city.
By the city to the church at the close of escrow, yes.
That amount should be paid by the city to the church. That's a typo, so--
That is a typo, and we will get that corrected, and obviously, that's material--
We vote on this, it'll be subject to that correction. Thank you.
Correct. And there are a couple of other very small details that are getting cleaned up as well.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments? Chair's open for motion. That motion is sought, is understood to include the corrections that were just made.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 10. Memorandum of Understanding Citigate Associates LLC's Scope of Work and Fee Proposal. Any comments, Mr. Robinson? Additional comments? If not, any questions of Mr. Robinson?
I don't have any additional comments. Just for the edification of the audience, this is not approving whether or not we are going to form a JPA. This is taking a look at whether or not we are going to study the issue. This would cause the hiring of a consulting firm hired by all four of the cities involved in this process to study the cost comparison of forming a JPA, a joint powers authority to provide police and/or fire services to the four cities in the high desert.
No further questions? Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 11. Request to approve the settlement agreement, mutual release agreement between the city and Nutro, along with corresponding additional appropriations, payment in the amount of Any further comments from the staff? Any questions of staff?
I would like to just request that, when we approve this, that it is on the agreement that we have no further ongoing liability or obligation to provide steam to Nutro.
Good point, and I hope that's the case. Staff?
It is the case. In fact, Councilmember Vias, thank you for bringing this up earlier in the day. It allowed us to get a full written, although not in memo format, it came in an email, from the attorney firm who handles all of our claims, who ultimately oversaw or at least reviewed the negotiation for this. And they have clarified in the email that that's the additional item certainly available to the public, but it's on the dais now, that very clearly that under the express terms of the ESA, the Energy Services Agreement, paragraph 10, sub-paragraph C3, "The city's obligation to provide steam ceased once Nutro's steam boiler became fully operational. Thus, once Nutro constructed its own steam generating facilities, the city was released from its contractual obligations to provide steam to Nutro. The city has no future obligations to provide steam to Nutro." And this is all new information to the council, although it's part of the ongoing history here. It was a good question to ask to make sure that it's clarified, and I don't think there's any problem at all, either on the side of our attorneys or Nutro's attorneys, if you want to clarify the motion by adding that language to your motion.
Isn't that the meaning of all the release agreements? When I see all those release provisions in an agreement, I assume that means we're done?
It is, but this agreement does not specifically say that we are no longer obligated to provide steam. The reason for that is the attorneys for both sides have been involved in this since '09, and their understanding since then is that that terminated in '09. So, it wasn't specifically put into the settlement agreement. So, it's good to add the clarification, but I don't think it's a problem for either side.
Thank you. So, the motion and the second, have those understood, that additional language would be understood to be a part of that motion in a second.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Item number 12 has been pulled from the agenda. I was prepared to talk about that for a long time. That's going to be continued to the next regular scheduled meeting. Madam Clerk?
My understanding is, at this time, the request is just to table the item, so there's no specific date.
Thank you. Then item number 13. A proposed resolution entitled Resolution of the City Council of the City of Victorville Initiating Proceedings to Collect Storm Drain Charges for Fiscal Year 2013-14. And I want an explanation on this. I thought we were currently collecting storm drain.
Mr. Mayor, we are currently collecting storm drain charges annually. It needs to be approved by the council in order to effectuate that collection. This doesn't create a new charge, doesn't increase the charge, nor does it modify in any way how it's calculated or collected, or, excuse me, how it's calculated.
And it currently is collected now? It'll be collected the same way as it is now?
No. Currently, it is part of your refuse water, sorry, refuse water bill.
Yes.
Along with, there's one other small charge. This would actually put it on to the property taxes.
Property tax bill. And that is the change.
That is the change.
But it's no increase in the fee.
The manner in which it's collected, but it's not an increase or decrease or change in how it's calculated.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Robinson, any questions of staff?
Yeah, why the change? Is it so that it's easier to collect if it's in the property tax?
That's a good guess. I would have to agree with that. I see Sean nodding his head yes if you'd like him to come down and confirm that.
No way. Take a seat, Sean. All right.
You can feel the love, Sean.
I think it should be made clear, though, for those residents that aren't here tonight or don't pay attention to what we're doing, all they're going to see is an increase in their property tax bill, and somehow, someway, we need to get the message out there that that's not what this is. I don't know if there's stuffers we can put in the mailers that go out with the normal bills that our residents receive, but we ought to do something to inform them that they're no longer being charged on their bill that they get on a monthly basis, but rather, it's going to be on their property tax bill that they get from the county.
Yeah, we can certainly make that clear. I don't know if it's going to be more cost-effective to do stuffers or to add language at the bottom of the bill.
Whichever way, but I think we got to do something.
Either way, we'll make sure that that's clear.
Imagine they'll be coming in droves complaining about their property taxes being increased when that's not what is happening.
Good point. With that, chair's open for motion in a second.
What do you want, a second?
Motion by Mayor Protem McEckern, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I don't want a second either.
Motion carries unanimously.
First, that's why I said what I said. I wanted to make clear we weren't raising taxes.
Well, I think the change that they will see, that people who are renting properties, where that bill went, where people signed up, and it went to the renter, and of course, the homeowner, property owner was responsible all along anyway. This just puts it on the property tax bill, so there's no question. But there is no increase. It's just a transfer in the way it's collected. We are down to agenda item number 14. Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Items for the Upcoming City Council Agenda. I'm not sure where we started last week, but we'll start with Mr. Kennedy.
I guess this is a question. When will we agendize or deal with the issue at VVWR on the, what we think is a potential conflict of interest? My understanding is the board at VVWR-- My understanding is, the board at V V W R A did not agree with our request, and I'd like to know where we're gonna go from there.
That's a, it's a good question, I asked that it be put on the agenda, I was late in making that request, it is a question that, as I understand it, because this, because the City of Victorville is a signatory to the J P A, we certainly have the right to make that request on the issue that was raised, and so therefore, the appropriate action would be to agendize it, and if it is the opinion of the council, to proceed to ask the attorney to obtain that legal opinion from either F P P C or the Attorney General. It's not agendized, I, we didn't make it, so it would be inappropriate to take the action at this time, so is it your request to agendize that for the next meeting?
Yes.
I, I fully agree.
You've already made that request, I don't need to make, I don't need to make it, too.
Well, but I wanted the council to understand that, it should've been on this one, I just didn't get to the city clerk in time, so, my error. Other items?
You know, I don't necessarily think it needs to be agendized here, but I just, maybe Bill can, can speak to the gentleman regarding the signage, and I think the appropriate avenue would be to go to the planning commission for that, right? Then keep bringing it to this level when we don't deal with that, it's the planning commission?
Yes and no, the sign issues in the city have a very long history, which I'm sure actually the mayor could actually speak to, given the time, as well as my predecessor, Mr. Natick, and others have been run out of town and tarred and feathered when they tried to deal with it. So, having said that, with the economy the way it is, I think enforcement has eased off. If, it's not necessarily the regulations, it is enforcement, but it will be a council decision to initiate that. We are, again, complaint-based, and we are going to have a workshop with the council on what priorities, what you want us to go more aggressive on, and which you want us to be more reactive on. Signage is one of those issues. Having said that, the majority of signs probably throughout the city are illegal. It's hard to begin dealing with the issue without dealing with all of them. That includes those banners out on the sidewalk that wave, and the fabric ones, as well as the ones on the sidewalk, as well as the handmade ones, as well as all the placards, as well as the ones covering the windows, so if you go to almost any business in town, they've got illegal sounds, signs. We would need to determine, it's one of those things where you either are non-aggressive, or you have to hit everybody with it.
When are we doing that workshop?
It's, it's upcoming, I think it's just after the budget, hopefully.
Is that scheduled?
It's not on the calendar yet, but it, it will be coming up, as Bill said, just after the budget, we're, we'll talk about a little code enforcement a little bit more at the budget hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, the main suggestion I would like to make, which, which I think is the most reasonable way to proceed, is if and when we do, that we provide ample time to notice all businesses throughout the city, what exactly is permitted, what exactly is not, and give them a period to remove those signs before we go out there and begin citing, you know, almost every business in town, and we have them all here. So I think there's a reasonable way to do it, it's up to the council to decide when and how we want to go forward, but our recommendation would be to take the, the approach of educating, informing, putting them on notice, giving them thirty days, sixty days, something of that sort, and then going out there and, and noticing, issuing some type of notice to, to the businesses. So there is a, a reasonable approach, we just need to be in unison as to when we are, and you need to be prepared for any repercussions.
Okay, so I won't agendize it now, because we have an upcoming workshop, and it will be there.
Sure, and it is a more, it's, it's, it's not necessarily a code issue, it is a code enforcement issue.
Okay.
Just a few years ago, maybe two or three years ago, we had businesses coming to the council asking to be able to put up some banner signs and things that are outlawed by the code, and the council gave a specific direction, as I recall, to staff, to, to be more lax because of the economy, essentially. I don't know if that was an official direction that had an end date, but I recall that when they were giving that direction, it was very clear it was for a temporary timeframe, a couple of years, until we started to grow out of the recession.
I, I remember that, and I doubt that this council is gonna give that kind of direction, I hope not, because it's always because we're going in a recession, or coming out of a recession, or about to have one, or give people a chance or something, and when we had the recession, we had to cut back on a number of employees, and unfortunately, one of the things we cut back was code enforcement. People discovered that we didn't have any officers on the weekends, and suddenly, we just had a proliferation of signs all over the place that were illegal, and they knew it. We're back on our feet, I think the public input now is the demand that we enforce our ordinances, I'm hearing it more and more, not from one or two individuals, but from a lot of individuals, and interestingly enough, I'm hearing about the sign enforcement from other business people who feel that they have unfair competition by not enforcing it from what's going on, so I think you're going to, it's a, it's a good opportunity for the city council to look at the ordinance in itself, and make sure that it's reasonable, but make sure that the people know that it will be enforced, even if it has to be amended, but it will be enforced. Councilmember McEckern, I'm sorry, Councilmember Vias, is there any more, Councilmember McEckern?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Garcia. Doug, do you have any items?
Not for the agenda, no, are you moving on to reports?
We'll go to reports and start with you.
Okay, just so the council's aware and the public's aware, the hearing with the California Energy Commission is next Tuesday, or, excuse me, next Wednesday morning, so I will be flying up there with one staff member to hopefully bring back a positive decision that we get a five-year extension on that permit to construct the Victorville Two Power Plant. Then the following Saturday, the fifteenth, I don't think the public is aware of this yet, and I hope I'm not announcing it out of turn, but there is a softball game being planned, or softball tournament, between all of the five cities of the High Desert. I don't know if everyone's got a team together yet, we're still struggling to, to fill out our team, in all honesty, and that is gonna be at Maverick Stadium on the fifteenth. And then shortly after that, on the eighteenth, we are planning a budget hearing, Carol Lee will be in touch with all the council members once we determine exactly how much time we'll, we'll need to try to, to get that, that scheduled. The intent of the staff is to bring that forward on the eighteenth, with an option of a full approval on the eighteenth, or an option to continue the budget hearing to the twenty-fifth, the following Tuesday, keeping in our tradition of trying to schedule things on Tuesday nights, if the council has any changes, recommendations, or anything they want modified prior to the, the final approval.
Thank you, Doug, the underlying rumor is that all five council members will be playing.
Will be what?
Never mind.
Actually, we've made an agreement, Jim Cox will be umpiring from behind the plate, calling balls and strikes, and I'll be umpiring at first base, and the two of us wish all the other cities a lot of luck.
We'll let you tell Mayor Kari Thomas over in Adelanto that what the plan is, I'm not gonna relay that message.
The ball field's in Victorville, isn't it?
No, it is in Adelanto.
Oh.
Maverick Stadium, so.
Councilmember Garcia. Any reports, any, Councilmember McEckern?
Just, just one thing, and I share the speaker's concern about city signs, ordinances, enforcement, it's a perplexing problem, particularly at a time of, with the kind of budget constraints we're dealing with. I dealt with a phone call over the weekend, a new residence moved to Victorville with a barking dog next door, this poor lady, I believe what she told me, she hadn't had a night's sleep in nine days, this dog barks all day, all night, they've complained to the police, the police have been out once or twice, I mean, it's a, it's a whole process for dealing with, and the neighbor with the dog's attitude is, and he told his new neighbor, they won't do anything about it, so you can complain to anybody you want, and they won't do anything. And she got my number and called a council member. A citizen should not have to call a council member to get action, and so she's not gonna get any special treatment, but we hope a process is in place, but this kind of enforcement issue, these, these enforcement issues are just troubling to us constantly, because a barking dog is right, is a trivial, who cares, police have much more important things to do than that, unless you're that lady who can't get a decent night's sleep with three little kids for nine days, and for her, that was, you know, that's a major crisis, so how do we deal with all this, dealing with limited resources? Tough question, and I have no answer, I don't.
It's a tough question, but lack of enforcement of the rules creates discontent, disillusionment, distrust of your government.
It does.
If we're not going to enforce it, we need to take it off the books, and if we're gonna have it on the books after we conduct a public hearing, and we believe we're doing the best thing for the public, then we need to enforce it. I have no further items, thank you very much for participating in the nice meeting, and good night.